Chris Stickney? Can you hear me, Chris?
Yeah, now, yes, thank you, great.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everybody, welcome to the Franklin Planning Board November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded as well as on Zoom. And the Zoom call-in number is three one two six two six six seven nine nine with a meeting number of eight seven nine eight six three seven nine four five one. I guess what we'll do is we'll take our first items of business for general business, and this will be election of officers. If I could make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to elect Jay Mello as the vice chairman. Do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Mark Mutjaron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
Okay, all right, good. I'll also make a motion to elect Chris Stickney as clerk.
Second.
On favor?
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Oh, we have to bring back the chair. I'd like to make a motion to elect Greg Rondo as the chair of the board.
Second.
Do I hear, all in favor? No, we're gonna have a roll, we gotta have a, yeah.
All vote? Jay Mello?
Yes.
Mark Mutjaron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes. Greg, what say you?
Yes, thank you, everybody. Okay, we actually want to have some introductions tonight. We have a new member, a new associate member. If you guys would like to introduce yourselves, and we have an existing associate member that's now a new member, Mark, so we'll start with, we'll start with Mark first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome you aboard.
Thank you. Be a pleasure.
Eric?
Yeah, Eric Stelter. It's great to be here. I was, prior to this, I was serving on the master plan committee for eighteen months and look forward to working with folks here in a new capacity.
Good, welcome aboard. And Will, Will be our associate member.
Hi, I'm Will Lee. I'm excited to be in my first elected position ever. This is fun. I'm on the Historical Commission and have been since two thousand and twenty-two, and I just joined the Cultural Council this past August. I'm the assistant town clerk in Hopkinton, and I'm just happy to be aboard.
Great, welcome aboard. I'd like to welcome Jay as our new vice chair and Chris as our clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A second item of business. This would be an eighty-one P signature. If I could go to Amy really quick?
Yeah, so this allows the chairman to sign the eighty-one P A and R plans with one signature. It goes on file, the registry ID is in the land court. So if the board agrees, I would ask one of the members to make a motion.
Is what I need to do, or can Mr. Chairman make that motion?
I can't, you would have to.
All right, I'd have to make that. So I'd like to make a motion to have Greg sign for us in the capacity of chairman for eighty-one P plans.
Second.
All in favor with the roll call?
We're going to.
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Next item of business on the general business, this would be our meeting dates for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-six. Do I make a, hear a motion to approve two thousand and twenty-six meeting dates?
Motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-six meeting dates.
Okay, do I hear a roll call vote?
We get a second?
Yep, second.
Roll call vote, Greg?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Mark Mutjaron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
The next item of business, this would be for a lot release for seven Chris Drive. If I could go to Amy, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this comes up every once in a while, typically when somebody goes to sell their house. When we approve subdivisions and as they construct the road, we hold the lots into a covenant, and it's approved by the planning board. I'm kind of updating some of the new members. And those covenants are held until the roadway is safely passable to start developing the house lot. So if you're just gonna put in a little brass path and think you can develop a house, and there's supposed to be a roadway there for access, you don't get a lot released. This is a very old, old subdivision. I think the house is probably twenty, thirty years old, so everything's already been developed and in place. Every once in a while, these come up with the title searches when the houses go up for sale, and the lawyers go and do title searches, they'll say, oh, this one lot in the entire subdivision wasn't released. So it's very simple, so it's just releasing the lot, so it can be sold, the house, the house lot to be sold.
We, just so you guys know, we come across these probably every one, maybe three or four months, they'll come about, so it's nothing out of the ordinary. So make a motion to release lots, seven Chris Drive for a lot release. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Mark Mutjaron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
Before I go to Donovan Estates, I'm gonna go to eight sixty and eight sixty-two West Central Street with the Glen Pharma special permit application, and I believe they withdrew because we weren't gonna have a full vote, and I just wanna confirm that with Amy, and they are resubmitted already?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a special permit requires super majority, which would be four out of five votes for it to pass, since, and you can only miss one meeting for a special permit, so obviously our new members have not been present for the previous meetings, so they have willingly withdrawn, and they have already refilled a new application, the same application. I do ask that the board waive the application fee for them, since it makes sense that they should have to pay again, and they have re-applied, and they would be on December fifteenth meeting, but I already have that posted and all set, so you don't have to vote on that.
You want us to vote on the?
Vote on the withdrawal.
So make, I make a motion to release on the withdrawal and on the application for the new application fee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Mark Mutjaron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, and then, this will go to our last item of business. This would be for forty-seven Partridge Street, defending the subdivision plan known as Donovan Estates. If I could go to Amy for a brief review, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is located at forty-seven Partridge Street. There is an existing house at the very end of the proposed roadway that will remain there. They're proposing it's six lots for, six new lots for the subdivision, one lot for the existing house, and then there's an A and R lot that exists, that it would be buildable on Partridge Street. Just a few comments that I had is to have the applicant consult with the DPW regarding the lamp posts for the roadway. The lighting plan should be provided to show any light spillage. Fire has provided a letter. The applicant still needs a file with Conservation Commission. I'm not aware, has it today, if it's been filed yet, but they will have to work with Conservation. And I know that Beta and DPW are currently reviewing the stormwater and utilities. I do wanna note that Beta is online, may have some verbal comments, I just didn't have time to put together the full review. And then there's the two waivers requested, one is to remove one of the sidewalks, and the other one is to allow a less than forty-two inch of cover over the drain pipes, which is typical.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before I go to the board, is the applicant out there?
Yes, yeah, hold on one minute, and he should be allowed.
Amy, do we need to vote to waive the public reading?
Yes, we do.
Make a motion to waive the reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Jay, Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Mark Mutjaron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
Okay, so Rick should have permission to speak.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, hi, Rick.
Hi, good evening. Apologize, feeling a little under the weather today, so zoomed in, but I think Amy gave a good overview of the project. We have received letters from the planning department as well as the fire department. We have had discussions with Beta. They are planning on, excuse me, completing their review this week, the discussions that we had. Certainly like to take in those comments and work on revisions that we anticipate to be forthcoming. Amy did highlight the waivers. Basically, we're proposing the construction of a roadway of approximately six hundred feet in length to service the eight lots. One existing house will be on one of the lots proposed. The existing A and R lot will now have the ability to have access off of the proposed roadway as opposed to coming off of the existing Partridge Street. The site currently has a sewer interceptor line running through it that we would like to take advantage of. We are proposing the installation of a water main, which would include two fire hydrants. The fire department has provided comments on that they are happy with the installation of the fire hydrants for fire protection increases in that area. We will also be filing with the Conservation Commission, but we wanted to take an opportunity to come and have a overview with the planning board, get some feedback, and then move forward. I do know that some of the board members were around in the last year when we had come in with a preliminary plan for this project. You had seen some preliminary ideas for that, and we were looking to go in the direction of some open drainage at that time, but the board's preference was to pursue some closed drainage, so we have a catch basin and pipe system. We have two stormwater control systems, one being an infiltration detention basin, and then some, some wet swales located at the intersection of Partridge Street and the proposed roadway. So that's a brief overview of where we're at. We're happy to be, happy to take any questions that the board or the audience may have, and thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Go to the board first. Jay, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, absent a report can be it, right? So some pretty preliminary stuff. I think the big one that stands out probably to all of us is the easement. I'm obviously not in Rick and his team's AutoCAD world, so I don't quite know if we can align the road to work a little better with that. That would be my preference. You'd have to tweak the basement and stuff. Absent that.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Rick, can you, this mic not be picking me up? Let me, let me do that again.
Yeah, I wasn't getting much of that. All I heard was align the road.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah, that's much better, thank you.
Sorry about that, the mics are distant.
No worries.
So if we could, you know, I'm not playing with your AutoCAD model, right? So I wouldn't know, but if there is a way to, you know, put the sewer line a little bit more in the road rather than kind of cutting across lots, I think that'd probably be a preference of a lot of us. Absent that, if you could do some small things to kind of account for it a little better, like there's some trees in the easement, I think at least they are trees are proposed there, so like to move those out of the easement, I understand they would take them kind of away from the frontage of the road, but, you know, some of them look like they're planted like literally right on top of the sewer, so to fix that would be nice. And that's kind of really the only two I have at the moment, to get stuff back. I'm fine with the drainage thing you did on the street with the water quality swell, so I actually think that's kind of a nice addition.
All right, thank you.
Chris, I'll go to you. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think for me, Rick, the question I have is there's the existing garage and shed, and on one of the plans, it appears that they're gonna stay in the future, is that true or not?
The garage and shed located?
On lot four.
On lot four. The shed will be removed, the garage will stay, is the plan.
Okay, excellent. And I think the only other concern, and I'll leave it to the experts on this one, but is just the proximity of that house to the basin of lot P. I mean, it's, it seems like it's far enough away, but just wasn't sure about any concerns with that, but those are the two issues that I was looking at uncover.
Thank you, Chris. Go to Mike, Mike, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm gonna wait for Beta, Beta, and I think the questions that were just asked, so I have no further comment.
Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be interested to see from Beta a little bit more on the disturbance to the wetland buffers, noting that there is some disturbance in the twenty-five foot to fifty-foot buffer. I'd be interested to hear also some of the information about the erosion control, recognizing the proximity to the Shepherd, is it Shepherd's Brook there, making sure that that's taken care of. And then just one small, very administrative item, but on page eight of eight, it references our former town clerk, and so you might just want to update that to Nancy.
All right, thank you.
I'll go to Eric.
All set, thank you, Chair.
Will?
Oh, I have nothing to add that wouldn't be duplicative to what other people have said.
Okay, good, thank you. Before I go to Mike, I actually had a couple of quick questions for Rick. Rick, you plan on having this road taken over by the town?
Yes.
Second question, does this meet all our rules and regs prior to asking for waivers, all your layouts?
Yes, there were two waivers requested, Mr. Chairman. One would be for the elimination of the two sidewalks, and that would be to allow for one, which we could certainly do the two if necessary. And then secondly, the cover over the drain pipe was the only other waiver that we requested, but as far as geometry, layout, length, et cetera, width, everything else could be, can be within the rules and regulations.
Okay, good, thank you. And I just had one last quick question was, on the depth of the basin, what's your high, what's your low point of the basin? The topo cut through isn't very clear to me. I just wanna make sure there'll be a. If you're more than three to four feet deeper, so I just wanna make sure there's gonna be a fence around that, because the adjoining neighbor is fairly close, as Chris brought up, they are kind of close to that basin.
Yeah, so the, I was trying to get to the cross-section of the basin detail. You can see on sheet, sheet eight, and bottom of the basin is one eighty-nine fifty, and the overflow grades are one seventy-two thirty-five, so we're looking at about three feet of water at a hundred-year storm event, slightly higher than that grade.
Okay.
It's my recollection, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it was around three feet deep at a hundred-year storm event.
Okay, okay, I was coming up with around four feet, I just wanted to make sure I was pretty close. I would probably recommend a fence around that for safety purposes, obviously, if it's not on the drawing. That's all I have for now until Beta comes back and Mike comes back, but I'll ask Mike with DPW, if Mike, you have any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did take a cursory look at the plans, but I just wanna touch on the, they are proposing a water, water main down the roadway, so that will require Town Council approval for a water map amendment, so that'll be one step they have to do, and also with the sewer. There's this, the sewer does, running through the easement there, that is an interceptor that's owned by Charles River Pollution Control District, and it, the way it's laid out, if they were to, they'd have to get permission to tie directly into that for some of the houses, but some of the other proposed houses on the other side of the road won't have frontage on that, so I think they'll still need to go to the Town Council for approval for the sewer map amendment as well, so that's just two steps that they'll need to take for that.
What do you think the depth of that interceptor is?
I don't know, Rick may.
Rick, do you happen to know the depth of that?
I know.
Feeling, feeling deep, I presume?
It is, it is.
Make sure we make provisions if, if we're gonna be tying into it for safety purposes and.
I do have the depth, I just don't have it.
Okay.
Yeah, some of the manholes we were not able to access because they were locking. I'm trying to see if we have the main manhole of the street. I do have the profile of the design plan, I can take a look.
That's okay, I just, I just wanted to ask the question, 'cause I presumed that one was.
My recollection was, is in the vicinity of ten to twelve feet.
Okay. And one last question, you're in process of going through COMCOM right now?
We're putting, the wetlands people are putting together the application for filing.
Okay.
Working on that.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Chris, are you good with comments, questions for now?
Well, one that just kind of came up, Mr. Chairman threw you to Mike. Any concern with the alignment of this proposed road in Harborwood across the street? They look like they're pretty dead on, but if there's any offset, I know we talked about this with Delta Drive, just wanna make sure we're on the right side of it.
Sure.
It's not on the plans, I was kind of doing it on Google Earth.
Okay, I, I'll take a closer look, I didn't notice it on the plan, but I can take a closer look at that, how the alignment lines up.
Thanks, Mike.
It shouldn't be an issue, but I'll take a closer look at it.
Thank you. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chris. Rick, maybe, maybe you can do a quick sketch on the drawing for Mike and Beta to review just to be safe. We did, like I said, we did encounter that with Delta Drive and, was that something?
Union?
Delta and eight, eight in the states.
Eight in the states.
Yeah, eight in the states, yep.
Look, we can provide them a sketch, no problem.
Okay, good. And you, and you saw the note about the light bulbs?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so, Amy?
I, we have Beta online.
Okay.
And then there might be other residents online as well, but if you want to.
Steve, if you wanted to just give a quick, brief overview, I know you didn't get a full in-depth, but just a brief update.
No problem. Good evening, everyone, and to all the new members. To introduce myself, my name's Steve Lee, I'm with the Beta Group. I've been doing the stormwater reviews, God, for so many years now, right? It's been about three months. So, yeah, I thought I would just, there's a couple, you know, we, we have more, we have more comments of what I'm going to say, I figured I'd just hit on some of the, the higher-up items just as a, you know, kind of, just as an item to mention some of them. And like I said, I spoke with Rick earlier, early, late last week, and this peer review should be completed by Wednesday at the latest, so we'll be sure to get that out, and he'll be able to address all of our comments individually. So one of the things that I noted is that according to the bio, to the subdivision rules and environmental analysis would be required for the project, considering that there's more than five lots being proposed for the subdivision. So in, Rick, for your, whether or not you know this, that they have certain questions under the environmental analysis that would be required to be answered in the little report or letter that you provide for that. So is that? I didn't know there's, at the intersection of the street with the proposed ways, one of the items is intersections with side, with street sidelines shall be rounded at a curve no less than thirty-foot radius measured from the curb line. The easterly side of the proposed road layout has no rounded side to it, so I didn't know. That's an item with like the layout of the roadway that was, that kind of jumped out at me when reviewing this. There's another item of like the proposed roadway, in the regulations, they state that you wanna try to have a balance between cut and fill. This roadway is predominantly fill, and, you know, if there's, you know, a reason for that, whether it's water table or whatever, you can provide an answer on that, but it's one of those things that it's, we, they try to have it balanced as much as possible. Again, under that same thing, the roadway includes, there are certain areas that are greater than five feet above existing grades. That design element would require specific authorization from the planning board. Um, that design element would require specific authorization from the Planning Board, so ultimately, we would d- defer, um, that item to the Planning Board if they find it acceptable or not. Um, who's, they spoke a little bit about the, the sanitary sewer that's there. Um, I also mentioned, I know, uh, Amy said something about a photometric plan showing light spillage, um, providing a photometric plan. Providing a landscape plan, specifically, um, like a shade tree and landscape plan with the submission. Let's see. So, one, and again, a, another item with the, like, the water quality swell, I like the idea of it. One of the, um, subdivision rules or regs on stormwater is that stormwater components have to be located on a separate lot. That currently is located in lot eight. Um, and so that opens up another thing as far as providing access for cleaning. Um, there are certain, um, regulations in the stormwater handbook that state you have to have a certain amount of area to get a truck in there, cause water, wet water quality squel- swells require, um, an above average amount of cleaning maintenance. Um, again, I'm kind of just cherry picking here. Um, and then I, 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 I think the last thing was regarding the subsurface exploration. For the infiltration basin, the stormwater handbook says that you should have one septic, uh, excuse me, one, uh, test pit or soil sample, uh, for every five thousand square feet of the infiltration basin area, or a minimum of three. Uh, there's one currently right now that's kind of on the, the side. It's almost on the berm. There's not really any in the bottom of the test basin, uh, at the infiltration basin, and there's also no subsurface, um, stuff near the wet water quality swell. So providing, you know, um, soil samples or some kind of, um, test pits in these areas to confirm the subsurface material. Those are just some of the major items that, um, that we have. But again, we'll be issuing our final letter within the next two days, and it'll have all the items on there.
All good, Steve? Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody in Zoom?
Just, if, if anyone's on Zoom, they just need to raise their hand and then they can all, um, to talk.
Anybody in Zoom land have any questions or comments? This is, um, just one of many airings that we'll have on this, but if you have any questions or comments? Okay, I guess, see no, see no hands raised? Anybody see any?
I actually have one comment for you.
Sure.
The sewer main is at least fifteen feet deep. It looks like it's at one fifty-seven, the intersection at one seventy-two.
Okay, good, thank you, Jay.
Pretty deep, yep.
That's what I thought. Um, okay, so, what do you think?
Uh, December fifteenth?
Yeah, with the, uh, Rick, the fifteenth of December work for you for, uh, a little bit more of an update, once you get Beta's report and work your way through.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that will be fine, thank you.
So make a motion to continue, uh, excuse me, definitive subdivision plan for Donovan Estates till December fifteenth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris, uh, yeah, Chris Stickney, yes, Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, everybody have any general business?
Yeah, one more item. Um, I, I talked with our chairman about the next meeting is scheduled for December first, and currently, there is not any items on that agenda. If the board would like to cancel that meeting, uh, we do say, I actually just gonna backtrack real quick. When we did vote on the dates, um, for, for the next year, I always put a line item that says dates are subject to change, so, um, if the board is in agreement to cancel the next meeting on December first, that would be against December fifteenth for the next meeting.
Do we have some latitudes to wait? Do we have to cancel now or cancel now, correct?
I feel I need a vote on it, um, unless you guys all wanna do a Zoom call that night and say, cancel.
Nah, I know, we'll just, we'll just make a motion to, uh, cancel our next meeting, uh, December fifth, was it?
First.
First, excuse me, uh, due to not enough on the agenda. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Chris?
Uh, Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Mark Moucheron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
And just one quick question on that. Who's playing Monday night that evening? Does anyone?
I don't know, I didn't even look it up.
I, I didn't either, but this is a fantastic gift, so I'll take it.
So Merry Christmas.
The holidays, yes, we get a little break for the, for the holidays.
We, we will have, we don't have a whole lot on the agenda right now, but we will get as it goes forward, so there'll be times that we'll push out certain days, uh, as we move forward to them. So, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Moucheron?
Yes.
Eric Stelter?
Yes.
Chris Stickney, yes.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome aboard, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.